Of the school committee for October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And if you are able to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this meeting is being recorded. There it is also available to join on Zoom. I do recommend watching on the Westford Cat livestream on YouTube if you have someone at home that's watching. Because the owl is the video for the Zoom. But Westford Cat uses like the cameras to show the room and stuff. You what?
Do you want to just shut that off for a second while I reject this?
No. So we're just going to start the Zoom while we do consent agenda. You think you've got it? Okay, I already said it was being recorded.
You did.
Okay. So we'll get started with our consent agenda. In the packet, everybody should have seen two versions of two dates of meeting minutes. Three warrants for us to sign tonight and a special education reserve fund transfer in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three dollars and some change. So looking for a motion and a second on that.
Motion so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda as outlined?
Aye.
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to give them a minute in case anyone's looking for virtual public comment.
Sorry folks. Minimized it.
I think it's live here though.
Yeah. Expand it.
Sorry.
Yep.
That's okay. But we're like, we're live for people to join?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, just to make sure.
We have a bunch of.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
One quick second, sorry about this. Thanks for everyone's patience. That never happened before.
I think you want to poll.
Um, okay. So sorry, next order of business is public comment. Um, a reminder that three years ago, the committee protocol changed and we have public comment at the front of the agenda for all items, even if they're later on in the agenda. We do try to keep speakers to two minutes in their comments. And the overall duration of the public comment period may be extended at the discretion of the chair. So if you're virtual and you'd like to speak, just raise your hand and we will sort of switch off, I guess. And promote you and unmute you on Zoom. Or if you're in person and you have something to say, it'll just be right here at the table with the microphone. Introduce yourself and your address and then we'll hear to listen.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Ash. I live at thirteen Depot Street. Um, I'm, I wanted to comment or really to be honest, ask questions about the Washington DC trip. And I understand that this is the public comment part of this meeting. But not having heard too much from the principals of the school as to what their rationale for canceling the DC trip was. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask questions when I haven't yet heard the presentation by the principals. So I would ask the chair, would you like me to ask questions now prior to hearing from the principals? Or would you rather reserve my comments and comments from others until after the principals have spoken?
So our order of business is public comment at the top of the agenda even before all business items. And it's a one-way communication method. So we listen, we don't answer and dialogue, like engage in a dialogue. So we'd love to hear your questions and then hopefully that the agenda item later in today will answer those.
And so I imagine then there's no opportunity for follow-up questions?
Not on this agenda and then we always have a public comment at our follow-up meetings.
Do you ask questions?
Do we ask questions of the business item? Yes.
So good ideas for questions.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'll, I'll start. I'm here today because I'm quite upset about the canceling of the Washington DC trip. I think it was very calculated to cancel it on Friday before a holiday weekend. I wanted to ask a couple of questions specifically, what were the exact issues with regards to logistics? I understand that there was some concern with flying and flying out of several airports. We could do like many other towns do and take a bus, which many of us have done when we were youngsters and we took the trip to DC. I would imagine, and again, I don't know specifically because no information was provided to us, what the costs, what the cost difference was between taking a bus and flying. And how that might affect the issue with logistics. I was curious, you know, the cost was an issue that was mentioned in the email from the principals. Indicated that there would be an increase in the cost year on year. Has there been any fundraising? Was there any contact with various groups in town to raise those dollars? Were there any, was there discussion about opportunities for students or parents of students to raise dollars? Was there any sort of survey taken to determine whether students were willing to pay the increase, whatever that increase might have been? Were there other opportunities and options? I understand that in the few days since this thing came out, since we were notified that there was a, an online petition that was generated that's got over, I think, twelve hundred signatures at this point. And that's just the one that I saw. There may be others that I'm not aware of. I have three children, my oldest, you know, when we were here, the last time I was at a school committee meeting was when we learned that you had canceled, that the, that the school, not necessarily the committee, had canceled the fifth grade camp. And we were quite upset by that. And I remember the uprising from the parents who attended that meeting. Weeks later, COVID canceled everything and it really didn't matter in that year. The next year, which was, which, which, that's, those students are now eighth graders. Those students lost their fifth grade camp. Now here they are as eighth graders and they're having the Washington DC trip stripped from them as well. I have an eighth grader now, I have a freshman that went last year and had a wonderful time. It was a wonderful growing experience for her and many of her other classmates. I have an eighth grader now who is looking to have it canceled. And I have a sixth grader who's here as well, who's also upset that it's, it's apparently being canceled, running forward. So I would strongly ask that, that I would hope that the principals will reconsider, that they look at other options. You know, again, I don't know what the staffing issues were. I believe one of the schools sends teachers and teachers only. Another school sends parents. I don't recall ever seeing an opportunity as a Stony Brook parent to go. I probably would have gone. I volunteer quite a bit in this town with the youth and I just feel like this came out of nowhere. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Sorry.
Online or?
No, we've, we've no hands raised.
Okay. Jen Wilson, twenty-seven Salem Road, also known as the nab dog waterhouse, for those of you walk your dogs. Same topic, the cancellation of the DC trip. Eighth graders get to study civics and learn about the three branches of government this year. On top of that, they would have gotten to experience what every educator and student would dream about. Seeing and experiencing firsthand what you learned about all year. It hammers home, all those lessons and stays with inspires a student for a lifetime. It's educational experiences like this that set Westford apart. Parents, students in the school committee should take action in the spirit of checks and balances to make sure we're doing what's in the best interests of our students and their families. The two reasons stated for canceling the trip. Increased costs and safety concerns due to flight logistics. I disagree. We can do fundraising. We can reach out to the Westford Education Foundation. We can look into busing. There are tons of concerned parents that are willing to dig in and work hard to make this trip happen. For example, I know Pepperell is sending a hundred eighth graders this year to DC. It's nine hundred dollars, they're working with Capital Tours, the same tour group that Westford uses. And it's everything, soup to nuts. Four days, buses, buses and to and from the tours, all their meals, breakfast, lunch and dinner. And on top of all that, they get a dance on a sunset cruise at the end of their trip. And they provide a payment plan if needed. If Pepperell can figure it out, Westford can figure it out. And I dare say Westford can do better. I think with more kids and the more community support, we can get better discounts and we can make this happen. The activities offered in the alternative are not even close to the same educational experience. I don't know how an educator can take an experience like standing in the majestic Lincoln Memorial, standing on the steps where Martin Luther King gave his, I have a dream speech, and substitute that with a trip to Canobie Lake Park. The only memory they're going to take away this year from eighth grade is that they missed out on an educational trip of a lifetime. I know there's a lot about bonding and what they missed out in COVID. But the biggest point here is this is a huge educational trip for our students and it should not be canceled lightly. You, I, I really don't think you can blame it on the costs. I don't think you can blame it on logistics. And I know you cannot blame it on COVID for once. It's very disappointing and I think I speak for tons of parents that I spoke to this weekend that urged me to come to the school committee meeting and voice our opinions. And like John mentioned, there's close to fifteen hundred signatures on a petition. And there's more that can be done to make this trip happen. I thank you for your time and I hope the principals reconsider the decision. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. We'll, we'll take a quick break for an online public comment. Krista. So if you're on Zoom, just a reminder to introduce yourself and give your address and we'll hopefully be. Oh, there you go.
I'm Krista Glazer, twenty-one Dunstable Road. Again, my public comment is in regards to the middle school trip. I'm going to echo everything that was already said previously without repeating it. My curiosity comes from the fact that I don't think this decision was made lightly by the principals. I really think that they probably thought this through. But not having that information, it's very hard for us to, to really calculate what.
Krista?
Krista. No, she's not muted.
Are you there?
You seem to have lost Krista.
I could stay like the four H club. I know that that's where we stayed when I was a kid. I also couldn't afford the trip, so I paid via fundraisers by myself. So I, they had fundraisers that were set up for us. That way I got to go to the eighth grade field trip. So I'm just curious on why that wasn't considered is the logistics of that. And then also why couldn't the decision be made earlier? Because I'm looking at this going, this, this couldn't be an easy decision. So why are we just hearing about it now? Why wasn't it prior? Why couldn't we just do one more year and say, you know, after this year, we have to cancel it because of this unless this and this happens? So it just feels like it came out of left field, but I know that the, the principals definitely probably put a lot of thought into it. So I'd love to hear exactly what the thought process was, what the numbers are and what they thought of.
Thanks Krista.
Thank you.
We'll do another Zoom.
Okay. And we've got, uh.
Helen?
Yep.
Helen, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey there, it's Helen Jameson. Um, I'm at eighteen Lakeside Terrace. Um, I'm sure many of you know me from PTO and being involved. I just really wanted to reach out and I know I'm going to repeat some of the things said, but I, I want to say them again because I want the committee to recognize how much the community has thought about this and has input on this. I know that there are issues surrounding budgets and logistics. Those was, that was the letter that was given to eighth grade parents. I know there were some replies that were given and posted on social media regarding inclusion. I just really want to know, you know, similar to what people had said before, how, how did this suddenly happen? As of May, there was big speeches given to all of the seventh grade incoming class about this fun trip that was happening. And then really left field just before a three-day weekend was announced to the students and their teachers, sorry, and their parents, without asking for any input from the community. As a community, we have the ability to fundraise. If we have this, certainly if we know by the beginning of sixth grade, the ability, whether these kids are selling cookies or mowing lawns, you know, it's roughly fifty dollars a week that I know is, is beyond some families. But surely there should be the option for us to try and fundraise over and above what is needed for each child in order to provide for everybody in the community to have this option if they want to. And if they don't want to, then by all means do one-day programs from home, which is, I believe, what we had previously as well. And regarding inclusion, I just really want to highlight that the importance of inclusion is not to deprive certain students. It's to raise up all of the students so that everybody can take part in the activity that will benefit them educationally and emotionally. You know, this is a great experience for them to have this overnight, right before they hit high school with the rest of their peers. I understand that there are finances and timings around us if we look at buses. I don't know why, or maybe it was if Philadelphia was looked at or somewhere closer that would take less time. Another thing that I wanted to highlight just lastly, um, there's no stipend for the teachers that are volunteered to attend this program. There is however, a stipend for teachers that are running clubs. I'm not sure if that's something that the school committee can look at. I would guess that there's a percentage that's really a drop in the bucket of what's being handed out to our schools. But that, you know, if that was included, maybe we would have also more input there. Yeah, that's, I did send a letter which I'm afraid was far more eloquent than a lot of the things I'm saying. But yeah, I, I really would like to hear how they got this answer and at what point, at what point did this start becoming part of the chopping block that we were not included in this? Thank you.
Thanks Helen. Okay. Why don't we take a?
Take one from the room.
Is anybody else in the room?
Yep.
Hi, Lynn Lambert, eight Snow Drive. I'm also the president of Blanchard PTO. I'm on round two of DC being canceled. My first son was in two thousand and twenty-one and there was the potential that DC was going to happen and then it didn't happen, of course, because of COVID. But I and two other moms took eleven boys in a van and we went and did the DC trip on our own. And we were able to pull together an amazing trip for under seven hundred dollars a person. We basically followed the Capital Tours tour that we were able to pull together. So now coming into this year, we were under the impression that it was happening. To the best of my knowledge, it was approved by school committee that it was happening. The students went into this year, we were all excited about the eighth grade trip to DC until Friday afternoon when my phone started going crazy that, did PTO know about this? Was this happening and again, going into the long weekend? It's disheartening that that's the way that this all went down. PTO was not involved, but I can tell you and to piggyback what Helen said. PTO has done a lot. We've worked really, really, really hard over the last few years to make two PTOs. We split the Westford Middle School PTO into two PTOs. We've been working together with a lot of things. We've had a lot of success. And, um, you know, we have a great team. If it's truly the financial part, I feel like PTO could probably be a part of that. We already have a meeting set up with our eighth grade teachers to get ready for the end of year activities just at our own school. And I know, I think I could speak on behalf of Stony Brook's co-presidents as well. We would be very happy to participate if it was truly just the financial piece. We've got a great team of very dedicated parents, a lot of eighth grade parents who would be happy to help. And I know when my first son had the potential to go, I asked about chaperoning and we were always told it was just the teachers that went. There are a lot of parents, especially at this stage of the game, were not that involved anymore. You know, the lower edge of the lower elementary schools, you can do a whole lot. Middle school, you don't get to do anything. Nor do your kids want you to be there half the time. But there are a lot of parents that I know if, because it is a lot to ask of the teachers. The teach, I, I also work at the Christopher Lee, so I see what happens on the inside. So I kind of feel like I have a good balance between the administration and the parents. And we ask a lot, a tremendous amount of our teachers. And like Helen said, they're not getting a stipend, they really do it because they enjoy it. But there's also parents that would, you know, we, we quarry, we fingerprint and all of that. I think that we'd be worth putting it out there to relieve some of the pressure on the parents. So I think there's two different avenues that could help support this trip in addition to what Helen said about the inclusion. So I just want to offer that up on behalf of Blanchard PTO. If there's anything we can do to help make this trip happen, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn.
I've got Laurie as well, just so you know.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lila Ash. I live on thirteen Depot Street and we're all eighth graders at Stony Brook. And we're here because we wanted to talk for like our, the student body too. Because we think it's really unfair that we don't get to go on our DC trip. Because all of these other grades got to go. And they said, and in our assembly on Friday about it, that it was a struggle last year too. But they still pushed through and were able to make the freshmen now go. So we think that should push more for us to go too. And we also don't find it very fair that we weren't given the opportunity to have fundraisers and like think of alternatives. You guys have anything you want to say? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
My name is Brennan Caldwell and I live at seven Cold Spring Road. As am now, uh, the DC trip has been canceled. My older brother Logan has, is in eighth grade right now. He was very bummed about the new DC trip getting canceled. My older brother Tristan, he has gone on the DC trip. I can, I remember him rambling on about it for a while. But now it's canceled and they can't go. So I am in favor of going.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Liz Sherry, ten Collamo Drive. I just want to say that I think a big part of this was that a lot of parents and kids were shocked to hear this news. We weren't, you know, polled, surveyed, any of the above about it. My son went years ago, still remembers it to this day. It was fantastic trip, both for bonding reasons, fun and education. I think it'd be great to be able to, you know, be inclusive and equitable and be able to afford all kinds of trips for everybody. I just don't think it's realistic. And I can say that because back in high school, my single mother could not afford to have myself go on the Washington DC trip or my sister. But we did not want it canceled for all of our classmates. So I find it really unfair to take who knows how many kids who unfortunately can't go, but maybe they can go with fundraising or what have you, or on a payment plan of some sort, if given enough time in advance. I think to cancel the majority of kids who seem like they may be able to go for a minority amount, that's the other part. We don't know how many families can't go or afford to go. That's not, there's no, hasn't been any transparency in telling us any of this. Uh, is it ten? Is it twenty? Is it fifty? We don't know. So all these things we don't know leave us with more questions. And, um, my other point is if the school system or whoever, you know, again, we don't know all the reasons, can't afford to go on this trip, then how can they afford to go on the trip in, at Westford Academy to New York City? Or any of the other trips that, you know, the big trips that are ever planned from this point on? Because we don't know what anyone's income issues will be, job issues will be in the future for any of our families. So I think if you're going to do this, it's going to be a huge precedent set for the years to come for our students and these great trips. And I think it would be really sad to do that. Because again, I feel it's very unfair to cancel something so great for a variety of reasons, for a select handful or who knows how many. That's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We do see your hands. We'll switch back to Zoom after this one.
My name is Jameson Ash. I live on thirteen Depot Street. And I just don't think it's fair that the DC trip got canceled. And I'm in sixth grade, my sister's in eighth grade. I know that she probably won't be able to go and I don't think that's fair. And I know that I also probably won't be able to go. So I just don't think that's very fair.
Um, my name's Sam Bridges. I live on nine Fairview Drive. And last, so my brother was, is in ninth grade now, which means that he, um, did the Washington DC trip last year. And he, I remember him telling me and it sounded like such a, like, sounded like it was so much fun and like he'll probably never forget that. And I just feel like we should, everybody should be able to do it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we'll take a quick switch to Zoom public comment.
Got Laurie here. I ask her to unmute.
Hi, my name is Lori O'Rourke. I live at seven Sherlock Lane. Um, as a Westford student myself, I went to DC as an eighth grader. Granted, it was over thirty years ago. I won't say exactly how long, but it was a long time ago. Um, and I still just have such great memories of that trip. Not just being able to see the nation's capital and, you know, really learn things hands-on, but just being able to bond with the other eighth graders and come together before going to high school, I thought was amazing. I still actually have the panoramic picture of our whole class hanging up in my house. Um, and it's very funny to look back on, but I still just really have such great memories. And I was so excited to raise my kids in this town and have them have that same opportunity. So I was really disappointed to hear that it had been canceled. Um, I don't want to dwell on what everyone else has already said, that, you know, we need more information as to why this decision was made and, you know, as, as a community, we would love to be able to come together and help fundraise so it can be an inclusive trip for everyone. So being the, the data scientist that I am, I sort of informally polled a lot of my friends that live in other districts in Massachusetts and a few in New Hampshire. So I actually got data from eleven different towns and cities. And I did email that over late today. I apologize, it was late. But I'm happy to follow up with any additional information that may be helpful. Um, out of the eleven districts that I polled, the least expensive was seven hundred and eighty dollars per student for quad occupancy, sorry, quad occupancy. And that was out of Merrimack, New Hampshire, using bus transportation, four days, three nights, all-inclusive. They had a Dinner River Cruise and they used Bennett Student Travel. Out of the eleven, I only found one that was flying. The rest were all bus transportation. The one that was flying, I believe, was Hangham and that was thirteen twenty-five per student. So I'm not sure if the information I got was correct, but I heard the price being thrown around for Westford students was over two thousand dollars. I didn't find any district that even came close to that. Sudbury was fifteen hundred for four days and three nights and that was the highest price that I found. But even Lexington, much bigger student population than us, was a thousand dollars per student. Most of them were about in that range. Newburyport, Bedford, they were all about a thousand dollars. So I just think if, you know, we put a little bit more effort into trying to reduce the cost and having parents get involved and do some fundraising, the students, um, I have a seventh grader myself who's very disappointed. They would love to, you know, join forces and try to get this trip to happen and to continue to happen in the future. And if we need to take on fundraising to make it more affordable, I think the kids and the parents would, would jump at that chance. So, um, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thanks Lori.
Thank you Lori.
Thank you for your research.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have the.
We're just going to check, take a couple more on Zoom and then we'll switch back. Don't worry.
Got the Laura's family?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, Ellen Lars, thirteen Hill Street. As a parent and educator, I understand that this whole process with the DC trip is a difficult undertaking and. difficult undertaking and can, but is still extremely beneficial to the students and even the staff as part of that bonding experience that they're experiencing through the year and seeing beyond outside of the classroom. As others mentioned, that this trip is, cannot be duplicated with local experiences. It's a great option, as I've seen some other towns have a local experience option. If that's something that families are feeling more comfortable towards, great, then we can offer that. Might need more help with that planning purposes, because I'm sure it's one of our staff who is doing the current planning to do this. So maybe they need help. Maybe that's just so overwhelming, we need to provide them with more help. Sorry. That we, we just, you know, deserve to, I guess, have more information. We, uh, there's a lot of people who are, I think, will um, just agree with being outraged with how quickly it was kind of just dropped upon us. Where literally like last week, we were talking with my own child, who is a current eighth grader, about, oh yeah, DC trip, you know, that must be coming up soon. I wonder when you're going to get more information about it. And then Friday, he came home enraged, um, just with the information that he was given. So there is lots of financial willing of local support and whether that be fundraising or other options, as in the busing, a lot of people are suggesting that. I know that if we need to have more support with the trip planning, if, are we only considering capital tours with the cost? As the previous person just mentioned, that other tour groups are going to offer other options and probably different prices. Because these tour groups, they jack up the price. That, a lot of it is the insurance coverage, but they jack up the price a lot and capital tours is a busy one, which means if they're in demand and they're expensive. So um, I guess where are we on the planning stages? Is this totally shot, which I think we're all hoping it is not? And um, who needs help? We are there and Westford is the town to, you know, we're all there, ready to jump. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we do one more? We've got one more.
I just needed a few minutes to, to put my point across. Everybody has made really good points. We live on 25 Duncible Road and my son is a current eighth grader, who like all other eighth graders, was super disappointed that the DC trip would not happen. One thing I just wanted to flag out, there, my son along with a group of people going into from six to seven grades, were also, were put into a PBL class without any input from the student or the family. So this is second time for him and that set of students who had a decision made for them without any input from either them. And they are young, so it's harder to involve them in the decision, I get that, or their family. We had absolutely no input a year ago when they were put into PBL without us choosing to, for them to go into PBL. And we had absolutely no input into the trip being canceled for a trip that they were really looking forward to. And that kind of leaves a bad taste in our mouth. Like, we, they are, they are young, but they are growing and we need to at least hear them out and have their opinion before a decision of this, this nature is made, something that they are looking forward to so much. So I just wanted to put that out. This is the second time around and it's not, it's not feeling well. It's not sitting well for, for my student as well as for his family. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it then.
Yeah, she probably just has her hands still up.
Yeah, I think it's just. Hi.
Hi, this is Mike and Oriana Cusett, ten Fieldstone Drive. And what I want to talk about is to add on the aspects of the trip, which are fun, inspirational, team building and memorable. I think a lot of people talked about educational part, about finance part. I'm not going to touch base on those, although I completely agree and support them. But I really want to pinpoint on those things. I'm not particularly noticeable in PTO, as parents know, but at the same time, I'm also well-known as a coach in Westford U Soccer. I think there are people who had me as coach before. So as I said, I have some authority to talk about fun, team bonding, memorable and so on and so forth. And I have my eighth grader with me. So um, the thing, so I have one WA graduate. She was on the DC trip in 2018. So that's a good while back. And I have also a senior, sorry, junior at WA and she missed out on the DC trip because of COVID. So we're, we're of course looking to have our eighth grader, Oriana, right now to go to DC trip. She was incredibly disappointed. And she wants to share a couple of memories, fun and memories that, my oldest one, Zania, was the DC trip, what, six years ago? And yeah, you want to talk about that?
So I have, so my oldest sister, I remember when she came back and she was so excited for the DC before and after. I remember before, like, she was even excited going grocery shopping for like snacks to share with her friends on the plane. It was, it was really cool because I remember it. And even after the trip, she came back and she was talking about all these landmarks and like all the, and the dance and like all, um, the experience she had and it was just really good, cool, yeah.
So uh, in terms of act, action, I think we were all surprised by the problem, which we don't fully understand. Yes, we understand it's a cost, but we don't have any numbers to prove it. I think there are considerations here, which were brought together, and the solution, because the solution was dropped on us. And the, my real objection to the solution proposed, it's not fun, it's not memorable. As Oriana told me, we go to Boston every time we have a guest coming over. It's not fun, it's not memorable, it's routine. It's something we always do. Freedom Trail is highly educational, but again, my kids have been, they are dozens of times. Can it be a lake park? Same thing. It's a local trip. It's something that we do as a family. It does not, it's not memorable, it's not distinguishable. So what I'd like to ask the school committee to do is reopen the topic with the principals to look at the problem statement. What was the problem? Can we analyze the problem better? Can we help them tackle the problem? Maybe we can, maybe we solve the problem. If not, look at several options that we can solve as opposed, if it's a DC trip, as at options with busing, without busing. Maybe options not a DC trip, maybe somewhere else, maybe Philadelphia, if it makes it any cheaper or any easier. But basically, look at multiple options and consider the options and involve the community into those options, into deciding those options and have that criteria of fun, memorable, team building be included in the decision that we're going to make as a town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in person?
We have nobody else on, oh.
Hi, Janine Jones, sixteen Jenny Richards Road. I've been involved with PTO pretty much since I moved here eight years ago. So I have a current eighth grader who's not very thrilled with this decision. I have a sixth grader who's also not very thrilled with this decision. I think everyone else has kind of hit on the major points. That's kind of how I feel. They did a much nicer job speaking than I will. And I think Mike just brought up, you know, the alternatives, you know, if the DC trip ends up being completely off the table, I think the alternatives do need to be looked at. The one other logistical piece, I know logistics were talked about with flight times and staggering and, you know, trying to accommodate two schools with like 400 students. And I know the idea is to bring Stony and Blanchard together, but has it been looked at to do them as two separate trips? I know I myself went to, I went to high school in Lexington. We had two schools. The schools did not go on this trip at the same time. They were separate. We bussed down, you know, is that an option? Does that make the logistics better? You know, if, if my understanding is that the students down in DC only get one dance as, you know, a unified group, so we could do that here in Westford. I don't necessarily think that going to DC, well, it's a nice opportunity for bonding. Maybe we just try to be school-specific on this particular thing. Again, the, the alternatives are not anything that I think our students and that they deserve, especially after the loss of their fifth grade camp. It's kind of like a milestone for these kids. They've lost that. Now, you know, they're expected to lose this, like what's next? Someone else brought up the precedent. This is, this certainly does set a huge precedent. I think as a town, you know, we moved to this town with high expectations, great school system, great, you know, town support. And I feel like we're, we can do better. I think that's the bottom line. And so I ask that you guys, with the principals, hopefully we get some additional information and hear what they have to say. And I would hope that you guys would ask for them to reopen this conversation. I think there's enough support, both from students and parents and community, I think. Thank you.
Thanks. There's no other hands raised on Zoom, so um, last chance for in-person, otherwise we will move on to our business items. I knew I could get you.
I don't normally speak in public. Doretta Wright, eight Torrey Terrace. And I don't know what more I could add to what everybody else is saying. I'm in full agreement. The thing for us, we um, moved here just a little over five years ago and we moved from across the country. So it was a huge move to uproot our family to move here. And so we did an exhausted, extensive research of school districts, because we heard that was the thing. You want to be in the right school district. For us, we wanted that school district to be not just an academic excelling district, but also one that developed the children into being well-rounded individuals. And that is what led us to Westford. And we heard about these deep-seated traditions that Westford had, these camps, the DC trip, the ones for the high school. And that's what we were looking for, for our kids. So they became these well-rounded individuals, not just academically excelling, but also community, being part of a community, because we did have to uproot and move away. And so as we had no, I had an eighth grader at the time that the DC trip got canceled because of COVID. Nobody could have foreseen any of that and the ramifications impact that. But now I have an eighth grader now and it just seems like we were all blindsided. These kids, they were so excited last year when they found out that the school committee approved the DC trip. They've been talking about it for years, years since we moved here. We heard DC trip, DC trip. And now to have that taken away, again, felt like we were blindsided. Fifth grade camp was taken away, now eighth grade DC trip. So it's just really hard because we moved here from, away from our family and all of that to someplace that we were hoping to build a community and family. And it seems like each year, things are just being taken away more and more. And so that's, so yeah, so we hope we can revisit and put it back on the table and try to problem solve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, please. No, we're going to stop right now.
Hi, I'm Wendy Briggs, sixteen Wayne Road. Also a member of PTO at Blanchard, PTO at Christopher Lee, former PTO Robinson. We moved to Westford in 2007 and again, pretty much for the school system and the community. Were really the two biggest things for us. And we have been very lucky with our three children that the school has been wonderful. But I do have to say that what we have seen a theme of lately is things being presented to us in a rather abrupt way. We experienced this with pre-first, the year that pre-first was done away with. We found out about it at the conference when we thought we were being recommended for pre-first. Fifth grade camp, again, same thing with my current eighth grader that everybody else has said. The DC trip. And so for a town that we moved to because we really wanted a collaborative community, it feels much like we're not being part of the discussion. And I really think that it's important, not only for the community, but to show our kids that we can all be involved in this discussion. This doesn't have to be something that we find out in this manner that feels like it was done without any input from this community. And I think in terms, I agree with what everybody else has said, but the only other piece that I want to add is that we talk so much about academics. There's a lot of pressure on these kids. Social, emotional is so important. And I think people forget that while we're doing, you know, presenting all these demands and these kids are working so hard, that there's so much value in a social, emotional community. And, you know, they're just, they're not getting that, just in these things that are being presented. The part of traveling together, being together, learning how to, you know, work together and do these things. I think we're forgetting that these are the important pieces, that when you go on and you grow up, you need this as much as you need the academics. So I think, you know, I'm just, like everybody else, asking you to reconsider and just think about the bigger, full picture.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks.
Okay, final call? Is anyone deciding now? Okay. Okay, thank you all for coming. We are going to move on to our business items and we will start with informational updates with the superintendent.
Sure. So actually, we don't have a lot. The, I was just going to share that we started our principal rounds last Friday. We had our meeting at Miller School. And the idea of bringing all the principals, now that we even have half of them are new, which is, which is pretty great. And we started at Miller School and we've been focusing on engagement. And so to bring them all through the buildings to see how the students are, you know, performing in the classrooms and the different feedback that the principals had about just even the consistency between the pre-K to two buildings, seeing, like the other principals seeing exactly what their students are doing in another building. I think it was fun for, for our WA principal to actually spend time in a preschool class and kindergarten class, which is not something that, that they had the opportunity to do that. So that was just, I, I just wanted to let everybody know again that we're doing that aspect and we have other, we have things on the, on the agenda tonight to just talk about. So that's, that's all I'm going to share about.
And briefly, I just wanted to mention that I've been asked to be a representative on the Westford Coalition for Nonviolence Group, which is a small but mighty group that was formed in Westford several years ago, that is led by Gail Johnson, one of our registered nurses in town. And this coalition has put together a handbook as a resource that is available in each of the schools, as well as some of the town offices that are available. And during the month of October, you might notice that the town comment is lit up in purple and wanted to make note that it's not because of Halloween season, but it is an awareness for domestic violence and promoting healthy relationships. So on Monday, October 23rd, at six o'clock at the library, the coalition will be presenting healthy relationships, understanding abuse, setting boundaries and identifying warning signs. And this presentation will be followed up by a 10-minute guided meditation, which all are invited to attend.
Thank you. And school committee updates. Sean?
I have a brief announcement. Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC, executive functioning workshop is being held virtually. That's next Tuesday, October 17th at 7:00 PM. There is a preregistration for anyone interested. It's being hosted by Kristin Jacobson, who is a speech, speech and language pathologist and executive functioning coach. 17th at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. That sounds good. I'm just going to sit on one side, sorry.
Yeah. The school start time subcommittee had our first meeting last Wednesday. Some of the initial priority areas that we outlined as a subcommittee include reviewing the findings and information collected of previous committees and town groups on the subject, exploring bus ridership numbers, current routes during program runs, that could be six to 12, three to five and K to two, and costs associated therein, exploring potential schedule and program shifts, and then what that would mean for structured learning time requirements under the Code of Mass Regs 60327, if you guys want to look it up. For elementary students, that's 900 hours per year. And for secondary students, that's 990 hours per year. Communicating with our dual county league partners and other DART and adjacent school districts and what they might have explored and/or are planning and implementing regarding shifts and start times, its effects on athletics, after-school opportunities and other programming. And then in the future, planning surveys and discussions with students, families and staff members that could be affected by changes in the start times. Clearly, there's a lot of research out there, especially in pediatrics and psychology, that adolescent students should be prioritized for optimal sleep habits. That can contribute to better academic performance, better physical and mental health outcomes, better safety and decision-making outcomes, and an overall improved quality of life. I think our goal is to be able to present some of those recommendations before the entire committee, hopefully by December in the school district. That could be.
A lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but it's worthy. So we have a meeting this Friday afternoon with Jen Piper, who is Westford's Transportation Director on current bus ridership and routes. So looking forward to that talk.
Okay. Thank you. Switched on this side of the room?
What he said.
Yeah, exactly.
He's still there.
Any other please? Mary, I'm Jen. Mary, my Jen?
Um, we have, we're planning our finance subcommittee meeting. We scheduled the time, but it needs to be rescheduled. So we'll be working on getting that time scheduled before the end of the month. There's a conflict.
So, did you have something?
Me, for change, no.
I had, I made a note. You will all be receiving a draft copy of the Budget Task Force Report in the next day or two, depending on when I get my act together. And you should have that next Wednesday meeting on your agenda, on your personal schedule calendar. Wednesday, the 18th at 7:00 PM. Who's gonna be in person and who's virtual? If you can just let me know that, that would be great. And before that, though, on Monday is special town meeting. So for anyone who would love a reminder, at WA, Monday, October 16th at 7:00 PM. And there is childcare available for free through the Westford Rec Department. The registration is on their website. We have to register by Wednesday. There's free transportation. And the, there's a couple of things to vote on. For the schools, there's the Blanchard Middle School HVAC rooftop units replacement. But there's other articles on there for voting, like how many and where firearm businesses should be allowed, and an affordable housing project at 70 Boston Road, and more. So please join us then. I think that is all I had, student updates.
Okay, so next week at Westford Academy is Spirit Week, which is kind of our biggest bonding thing that we do school-wide. And so some of the spirit days are USA Day, Anything But a Backpack Day, Cozy Day. So a lot of just fun things for the whole school to enjoy. And we're ending that with a Friday night freshman and sophomore dance homecoming, and then a Saturday night junior and senior homecoming. And then, like I said last week, trunk or treat is gonna be on October 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00, at Westford Academy. And it's mostly run by WA Student Council and clubs, but geared towards a lot of the elementary and middle schoolers, more elementary schoolers who can come, dress up, and trick or treat.
Yeah, great.
Colleges still continuing to visit. The October 15th deadline for students are coming up. There's also the November 1st deadline. This week, like UMass Lowell and like Boston College and UConn visited. Or UConn's gonna visit tomorrow. Next week, we have like Amherst and Columbia, so college is still just rolling.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Awesome. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, so can you promote Allison and Tim? So next order of business is an update on the middle school grade eight trip. And we have Principals Hammer and Heslop joining us virtually. Can you guys see over me? Like, okay.
They can't.
What?
They can't.
Maybe we can scooch a little bit. So I assume Allison and Tim, you guys have, just wanna dive right in to what you have prepared to share?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for inviting us tonight, including us on the agenda. I apologize for not being able to be there in person. I know it's a little awkward for us to be remote tonight. We certainly want to be a part of the discussion tonight and appreciate you making the accommodation. Mrs. Hammer and I have been on for tonight's meeting and listened to all the public comments. And as you can imagine, we've also received some emails. And we appreciate all of the comments and feedback and read all of them. We hope to answer some of those questions and provide you with some additional clarity about our decision to make the change for the eighth grade class trip. We know that this news to change the trip was certainly hard for some to hear, understandably. It's stirred up some emotions. Some feel that they will miss out, and some feel relief. While some students and families have expressed disappointment, like many of the comments we heard tonight, there are also some who have expressed that they're thankful, that they don't have to worry about things like the cost of the trip, flying for the first time without a parent, being away from home for an extended period of time, flying on an airplane, and rooming with classmates overnight. These might be the quieter voices, but we did hear some of them, and they're important to keep in mind as well. We also want to be clear that this decision was made very recently in collaboration between administrators and staff between both schools and, of course, in the best interests of our students. I know there were quite a few questions about fundraising. And I also want to clarify that what we faced was not fully a funding issue. It was rather an accumulation of issues that came to light over the very recent weeks.
Hi there. In addition to the logistical and the financial reasons, our decision to change the end-of-year trip for eighth graders was made based on one of Westford Public Schools' core values of inclusion. We care very much about the social, emotional well-being of all of our students and kept that in mind as we made the difficult decision. We kept coming back to it over and over again. We've both been on the DC trip, and we recognize the value of it and how amazing it can be. But our goal is to include every eighth grader in their class trip. And it's been harder and harder to do that over the past several years. Last year alone, 68 students between the two schools did not participate in the trip for a variety of reasons. Some of them were financial, but there were social concerns, there were emotional concerns, safety concerns, and other concerns that we probably aren't even aware of. But that doesn't mean that many of those eighth graders didn't want to go on the trip. They weren't able to go on the trip for whatever the reason was. In 2022, even when there was still an increased weariness about travel due to COVID-19, only nine students between the two schools did not participate in the day trips that replaced the DC trip that year because of COVID-19. That's a significant difference. And it shows that when we reduce the barriers for students to keep them from being able to participate in a class trip, that they will participate. In order to be a true, be true to our core values, we really needed to make a plan that includes all of our eighth graders.
Jump back in with a little bit more background. We know that this announcement was unexpected. I heard that in several comments and in emails. And that's understandable. We communicated this information on Friday because we're on a very tight timeline in making changes and making decisions, in digesting and trying to work around all of the information that we were receiving from the tour company and processing between the buildings with staff. And we wanted to make those decisions and shift gears and communicate that information with everyone involved as soon as possible. In the spring, to back up to when the trip was proposed, the middle school staff submitted the field trip proposal to go to DC to school committee, and it was approved, as it typically is. It's a requirement for us to bring overnight out-of-state field trips to school committee a year in advance to be approved. And we had all intentions of taking this trip to DC. I know that there was a question about why this hadn't been communicated to families earlier. Each fall, it's typical for us to receive the actual travel arrangements, the flight details, the hotels, the itineraries, the actual costs from the tour companies. And we received that information in early September, the week of the 12th. We were alerted to some significant changes in our initial plans that caused the rise in our concern. And we, we found that we were facing similar challenges at both of the middle schools. And we began working really hard to get around those hurdles and make this trip happen if at all possible. And Allison's gonna share some of those alternate arrangements that we considered in just a moment. But to get back to our timeline, Allison and I, the trip coordinators, the tour company, we were in communication daily, multiple times a day. Allison and I were working directly with the president of Capital Tours to come up with solutions and options to make the trip to DC work. The decision to actually shift from DC was not made until about two weeks ago. Again, initially, our goal was to preserve that trip to DC if at all possible. But it became clear for a number of reasons that it was not going to be feasible with all of the complexities that were presented to us, all of the alternate arrangements that were, that were presented for our consideration. So we started to work on the alternate plans. We held meetings with our staff at each school. We discussed the obstacles we faced, got input on the alternatives. And we got some positive feedback about the plans that are in place right now that are, that are being finalized, that we're going to share a little bit about later on as well. And we were asked to present these changes to school committee early last week, and that's why we're here tonight. We did want to share this information with students and parents again as soon as possible. So we met with the students on Friday during their lunch, gave them an overview of our decision and what we were thinking as an alternative, and provided the notice to the families that went out right around the same time.
So some of the logistics that Tim said I would be talking about, they, they made it really difficult for us to ensure that a DC trip would be the same for all of the students who are participating. And when I say that, I don't just mean between Blanchard and Stony, but among the students of Blanchard as a school, and then also among the students of Stony as a school. Because even though it is one big trip and that both schools go at the same time, it is two different trips that are run, even though it's all three Capital Tours, they are two different trips. They just, there's some overlap for things. So at Blanchard, the flight times were staggered by several hours. That would mean that students would have different experiences with their classmates once they were in DC. Kids would not have been able to experience all the same things. Some of the kids would have been there for far fewer hours than, than their classmates. And that was unavoidable based on the flight information that we were given and what we were not, we weren't able to make those changes. At Stony Brook, some of the students would be flying out of and back to Providence, Rhode Island, which is an hour and 45 minutes away. And others would be flying out of and back to Manchester, New Hampshire, which is 45 minutes away. So that alone, right there, also is a very big difference and split our groups up. So the results of these flights for both schools would be that groups would be split up for much more of the trip than we were used to. We worked with and we communicated frequently, like Tim said, daily. I think I was on the phone with that guy, I don't even know how many times. Lots of emails, frequently with Capital Tours, to explore the alternatives that would allow us to still go to DC. And some of the things that we talked about were alternative travel dates, changing the week of the trip completely, alternative flights. Can we change the airports? And using bus transportation. And unfortunately, we were not able to get acceptable alternative travel plans for either school that would ensure we could safely transport our school, our students without similar problems. And we did talk about bus transportation, and the price was very, very similar. I think it was like just around $1,100, which is very much close to what our trip was on, and I'll talk about the price in a moment. In addition to these logistical issues, increased costs would present a significant financial burden to many families. The price we received from Capital Tours was at least $1,200 per student. And that number has been increasing over the past years, pre and post-COVID. We did investigate the possibility of traveling to DC by bus, like I mentioned, and that price was just around $1,100, which is actually pretty similar. I also did some research with neighboring towns, and that is, the bus trip is around $1,100 for most of the towns, if, if chaperones don't have to pay their own way. In 2023, 24 families requested and were granted financial assistance. Basically, if a family asks for it, we gave it to them, which is not an easy thing to do. $15,541 in scholarships were given between the schools. We did have donations from individual families to help with that. There was some fundraising that helped to pay for some of those scholarships. But in recent years, the district has had to subsidize more and more costs of this increasingly expensive trip.
So with those concerns that came up about the increasing number of students have not participated in the class trip, the logistical and travel itineraries that made it more complicated, the rising costs, we need to make a plan that would allow us to focus on the priorities for the class trip, which is first and foremost, the physical, social, emotional safety and well-being of our students, an experience that is inclusive of all students, providing a memorable community experience that is educational and fun, and opportunities to bring the two schools together. You know, an important goal that we have in our school improvement plan that we've articulated and we've been working very deliberately towards is creating a sense of community, not just in our own buildings, but across the district, between the two middle schools, and finding ways to do that with this new opportunity that was presented to us that, that came out of this dilemma.
We are, we're committed to providing all of our students a celebratory and culminating middle school trip that they will find memorable and fun. And while the details are still being worked out, here are the details of our plans right now, where we stand. So first, a fun, shared experience among the middle schoolers across both schools. Everything that we do, we will be doing as two schools together. So that will include a three-day experience in May, and then again, in two days in May, and then a day in June, that's more accessible for all of our students. And those plans include a two-hour Boston Harbor cruise on the Spirit of Boston, duck tours, Fenway Park tour, a guided tour of historical sites on the Freedom Trail, and a Canterbury Lake Park trip. And that was so that there would be options for kids in an amusement park setting, you know, a fun setting that many, many kids do really enjoy. But also, there are some kids who are not really about the big ride. So Canterbury Lake Park offers big ride options for the thrill seekers, as well as some other types of options that are less thrill-seeking for those who are maybe not as comfortable with the thrill ride. The total cost for these three days is approximately one-third of the costs that we were given for the DC trip, making it much more manageable for all of our families. There will, of course, continue to be opportunities for scholarship support because we want to make sure that all of our students are able to, able to attend. And we do not want a financial issue to be the reason that they don't attend.
So we're actually in the final stages of confirming the arrangements for the alternative trip. At this point, we, just this morning, we were confirming bus transportation. It was very challenging to get the buses in place, but we think we have a solid plan now with Capital Tours. We, we landed at a final price for that aspect of the trip, for the transportation. We had already landed on a price for the actual day trips into Boston and for Canterbury. So we're, we're going to have a final cost for the overall trip very soon. Once we have that firm, we will share those trip details, itineraries, costs, permission slips. All of that information will go out to families as soon as possible.
Thanks, Allison and Tim. Was there anything else?
Yeah, can we have a discussion, please?
Shh. Can they nod from, can they hear us? Do you have anything else, Allison and Tim?
Hope that's it for now. We're good.
Okay. Thanks for walking us through that. And then, two questions? Yes, questions from the committee.
I have, I have a few questions. I'm just gonna. So you all said that there was 68 folks who didn't participate in the trip last year? Now, I'm sorry, I don't know how many students there are in both the eighth grade classes. So can you just tell me, like, what percentage is 68?
So...
Roughly. I mean, I don't need a calculator.
I'll give you the, Blanchard had 200 and, oh, we have these numbers right here. It's 200.
Low 400.
It's low 400.
Low 400.
400s in total, yeah. 400 in total.
187 and 236.
Well, they're connecting up with that. I can tell you that at Stony, it was 45 students, and that's the equivalent of two advisories.
Well, I mean, is it like, so it's less than 10%, right? Is what we're saying.
Forty-five, it's more than 10%. More than 10% less than 50.
At Stony alone.
Okay, so 17% of the kiddos. 16%. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm not a math major. 16% of folks didn't go. And did we, and I feel like maybe someone said that we didn't know why they didn't go.
I know some of the reasons. They just don't necessarily know all the reasons. That's what they said.
But we did, we, I think folks said earlier, like, was there like a survey or some kind of like formal process for gathering data about like why the kiddos didn't come?
I don't think there was a formal process, but they tend to know because the students tend to share why they're not going, like either with the counselors or with the teachers that they're staying back with.
So how many of those, like, we think all, we think we have information on all, why all 68 kids didn't come?
No.
So we don't really know why they didn't come.
Right. We know some of the reasons, which is what they shared.
Yeah.
The reasons that they're aware of.
Some of them.
Right.
For less than 16% of the kids.
Right.
And so I think that, I think some of what folks have expressed today is like feeling like they're not exactly sure why some decisions were made. And so that's why I'm asking some of the questions because it seems like decisions were made on some information that may be not entirely complete in some senses. And so in terms of the, I guess, I don't know. There's just so many notes I took while folks were talking. There was some discussion about inclusion. And one of the folks that talked today said a little bit about inclusion. And I think it's important to think about how we include everyone. But a lot of times, diversity and equity inclusion is also around different ways of communicating things with folks and making sure that we're responding to the concerns that are being raised by the kids themselves, too. So I just, I think I would encourage us to not just have this conversation today, but it occurs to me that it might be a really good opportunity to have folks have another opportunity to come back after, after the decisions are, the alternatives are released to continue this conversation. after the decisions are, the alternatives are released to continue this conversation, because I think that'll be really responsive to the concerns of that are being raised today by so many folks. And I know that there's a petition with fifteen hundred signatures on it. So I think that this group today represents a small portion of the concerns that are being raised, especially on such short notice.
Yeah, so I think like what Tim first mentioned, like it's less about cost, and then Allison mentioned like it's about like inclusion. But after that, all the reason we're given is about like, some about cost, but a lot of them are about logistics. So I'm really confused about what's the reason behind it, because like if it's not cost, it's more about inclusion, but like most of the problem are logistics.
I was just gonna share from the students.
I can comment on that. I will say that last year, when I found out that forty five students, and it was very close to the trip, that I found out it was forty five students were not going from Stony Brook alone, I was really upset by that. I was going on the trip with what I thought was a larger majority of the eighth graders than it was. So that's been in the back of my mind, but I wasn't thinking, oh, we're gonna change the trip. Then, when we start talking to Capitol Tours and they're telling us this is, this is how much the cost is going up, and also you're going to have a very different experience than you had in the past. I was gonna have a hundred and twenty kids approximately going to Providence, Rhode Island, and I was gonna have about ninety or so, or a hundred kids going to Manchester, New Hampshire. That, I'm thinking about the logistics of that, the safety wise of that, how am I, how am I going to make sure, even though my plan was to go on the trip again, because I do think it's, you know, I thought it was an important thing for me to be there, but my thought was how am I going to ensure that there's sort of a, like a final decision maker at both of those airports? It's physically impossible for me to be in Providence and Manchester. I realize I'm not the solution to all problems, but when it comes down to it, the buck stops with me when it, you know, on the trip. And so I felt very, very concerned about that and looking into options that were different. Last year, even arriving at Boston at Logan, a couple of hours apart, it was still a little bit unsettling to me that we were going to be so far apart in hours. And now it was Rhode Island and New Hampshire. That was a big, that was a big, so that big logistical issue was a huge, huge concern for me. So these things all kind of added on. So it wasn't that it was just logistics or just cost or just inclusion. It really is all of these things together. And when we started thinking, what is the best thing that we can do for all of our students? And the answer was, we need to find something that we can do that is more financially manageable for our families, that is logistically not going to put any of our students or staff at risk for safety or loss or whatever it might be, the unknowns, and also something that was going to make sure that we included all of our students. That that was really, that's really what it comes down to.
Thanks, Allison.
Just to add to the, Allison mentioned, you know, being in the position of, you know, the sole decision maker responsible for a group of students, and that's a big responsibility to place on the shoulders of a staff member or a parent volunteer who chaperones. And we, on a daily basis, were receiving updates from the tour company with changes to airports and changes to flights. And anyone who's traveled recently knows that this is becoming more the norm. I've traveled a few times since the spring and more of those flights were changed, you know, some were delayed overnight. And when you talk about splitting up groups and buses and putting students on different itineraries than their peers, you know, you do run that risk that a teacher could be placed in that position, and we certainly want to avoid that, that at all costs.
Thanks, Tim, Alex. I know, I know I see some hands. I just wanted to follow up on this, because I hear a lot of the logistics about flights. Can you talk more about what it would look like to bus and what logistics came into a full bus ride?
We did raise the question about busing very early on in the conversation. And with busing, because of the extended travel time, it does add on additional costs in terms of hotel meal. It extends, it sends the trip just solely for the travel. But we did have that conversation, and Allison did share some of those numbers, I believe, that that we received for the cost of the bus trip.
So what we.
Prior to last year, every time I've gone on a trip, it's actually been on a bus. And, you know, logistically, you can't control traffic. So there were many times when we would be three hours late getting back. But we also had a bus breakdown on the side of the Mass Pike. And they, that was not, that was not an easy move of forty five eighth graders onto another bus at, I think it was eight forty five in the evening, on the Mass Pike coming home after four long days in DC. So even with, I'm not saying that that is gonna happen all the time, obviously. It was, it was a fine bus up until it broke down, but the, you know, you never know what's gonna happen. I'll say last year, my trip home on at least one of the planes was diverted an hour and a half out of the way around New York City because there was a huge thunderstorm over in New York City. We found out when we, and the kids were not allowed to get out of their seats to go to the bathroom or anything. There was nothing, we were just on that plane hoping for the best. And what we found out when we got closer to Boston is that they almost diverted us to Ohio. And we would have been landing in Ohio approximately eleven thirty in the evening on Friday night of Memorial Day weekend. So I was very pleased that the weather did not cause that to need to happen. But thinking about that possibility as well, for safety of those students and the chaperones on that plane, it was, I mean, I was luckily on that plane, but there was a lot of concern in my head of what would have happened if we had had to land? What would we have done to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of these kids and communicating with families and keeping everybody safe?
Okay, thank you, Allison. I'm just gonna reiterate that we have to make it through our business meeting. And I know this feels unsatisfying, and I know you wish there was a discussion. But if we can't have this discussion, we have to recess the meeting. So I know, I know you're feeling your emotions, but we need to be able to hear them, okay? I saw a hand over here.
Yeah, I wanted to share from a student's perspective. I'm probably gonna be echoing a lot of the parents and students that are here. But that for both like a bonding, emotional standpoint and educational standpoint, this trip would be really important. I didn't personally go on it because it was right as COVID hit. But my older sister, my younger sister, both went on it, I've heard amazing things. I went to Washington DC actually a month ago, and I think just being in the nation's capital is really inspiring, especially when the eighth graders are taking civics. It really inspired me to learn more about our government, which is obviously one of the big, biggest things that everyone living in the United States should learn more about. And I just don't see how a lot of these logistic and cost arguments are valid, because using rough numbers from what I heard on the screen and here, I heard that there was about fifteen thousand dollars to supply people who needed financial aid for the trip. And I heard there was fifteen hundred signatures on a petition. I'm pretty positive, if you asked everyone to sign that petition for ten dollars for their kids to go on this trip, I'm pretty positive everyone would sign that, give up ten dollars.
Thanks, Alex.
What I, what I have is like a question, a lot of the parents echo this, like the idea that parents would be willing to like chaperone or help out like on the trip. Because what's been brought up a lot is like the burden that falls on teachers with this, but especially if the logistics getting more complicated of like splitting kids up, you know, Providence, Manchester, everywhere. You know, the burden that would fall on like a singular teacher or something. Was it considered of including parents perhaps in order to get more support or gain more? Just, again, just like adult support on the trip?
Tim and Allison, could you hear that question?
I could not hear that question, I'm sorry.
Your microphone's a little bit fur away.
They're, they're picking up on, oh, they're picking up on the.
Oh, thanks.
The question I had was about like relieving the burden that comes on teachers, especially with logistics getting more complicated, with, you know, kids being sent to Providence, Manchester, everywhere, and like maybe possibly in one teacher or something. Was it considered of like involving parents more in order to get more like adult support on the trip? And, you know, because it sounds like there are a lot of parents who'd be willing to chaperone or be willing to go on the trip in order to help out.
We did have that conversation, and in the past, at Blanchard, we actually have had a few parents join over the years. And those trips were certainly easier to navigate than what was presented to us. And as we learned, as I mentioned earlier, about the complexities of these particular options that we were presented with, we would need substantial supervision and adequate staffing in order to ensure that the trip is safe and manageable. And not something that we felt would be a wise decision, you know, to do that with parents.
Yeah, Sean.
Hey, Tim, Allison, thanks for being here. Can you, there's been some discussion about how this, that this particular iteration of the trip would look different than years past. Can you shed some light on that and how it would look different?
The, so when I asked, Jeff is the person I've been talking to at Capitol Tours, asking about flights, the first flights we got were, would have put the trip at well over fifteen hundred dollars per student. And so, you know, he said, these are preliminary flights, we're looking to try to get, you know, better flights for you. And he was able to get us better flights and the fact that they were not quite as expensive. But also the other, the flights are just, the flight options are not there. That was, he basically said that in order for us to get flights that are going to be more manageable and meet and not have you go to multiple airports and things like that, the cost is gonna have to go up significantly because the, they just don't have the flights for it. And they don't release them, the other part is, we had to wait. So we got flights, I think it was from JetBlue first, and then we had to wait on the Southwest flights. Like there were all these different, like, we have to wait till the airlines release the flights. But they have, they're looking for, for each school, they're looking for well over two hundred tickets. So they're, they're not booking, it's not like, you know, you can shop around, like if I'm shopping around, I can shop around for my family. But this is two hundred seats that they're looking for at the same time. And so that really limits the flights that they're able to book.
Was there, sorry, Allison, was there, was there a change to the content of what was being planned in DC or just to the, to the travel plans?
It was really just the travel plans. We hadn't even gotten to, I mean, the general, the general outline of the trip doesn't change necessarily year to year, depending on the ability of getting into the Holocaust museum tickets and things like that. Like there are certain, there are certain ticket, ticketed items that are harder to get into than others each year. But generally, the trip is the same year to year, just depending on what is happening on each day. The problem is when, when kids are arriving four or five hours after other kids, which has been happening for Blanchard, kids are gonna miss out on a significant portion of that trip. Because we arrive around, I think last year, we arrived around seven o'clock in the morning or seven thirty or eight. So we, you know, we basically got there and went straight on, I think we all, we all started at the zoo.
And was there any exploration as to whether or not there'd be a competitor to Capitol Trips or someone else that we could float, float this to? Or is this just Capitol Trips is kind of who we have to deal with and because of the size of the group or what?
So I don't know how Capitol Tours ended up being the tour guide, tour group that we use. I know it used, I know at least at Stony, I think Educate EF, I think a lot of people, parents lost a lot of money on that trip in the COVID year. So that's why we don't use them. But Capitol Tours has done a very good job. That booking started last spring. We got back from DC and we started, we booked, we booked the trip, basically said, hey, this is when we've put the dates out. Can we reserve these dates? They don't have flight information, they don't have hotel information at that point, but they're, they're basically saying, yes, we're looking at this week. And every other district in the country that's going anywhere is doing that same thing when they get back from whatever trip it is. So, so when we, when we, if we were to say at this point, let's look at a different, at a different tour company, the, the options are not as, are not going to be there for us.
Similar to the Stony Brook situation at Blanchard, we, like Allison said, we had the same idea of the other schools that take their trips to DC. We wanted the same week, the same arrangements. We departed from that eventually, but when these initial reservations came back, they looked really bad. I mean, we've had flights that might come in an hour apart or, you know, rare occasion, more significant delays. And they've created a very different experience and a lot of challenges. You know, where like a bus has a completely different experience and misses out on something, and the trip isn't the same for those students, and we want to avoid that. And this year, the alternatives that we were presented with were, you know, changes for smaller groups, a greater number of groups on as many as six different flights, half of the group waiting at the airport for transportation, some arriving at seven thirty, others arriving in the afternoon. So it'd be very difficult to create an equitable experience in those kind of situations. But we did go back and forth and ask, you know, for alternate dates, different flights. And as you know, we need to make those decisions very quickly. And, you know, in many of these cases, it was, this is just not going to be doable. There are too many factors that create, you know, a safety risk for our, for our students or make this trip just unmanageable for the adults that we're asking to go.
Is that a follow up or a fresh?
No, a new question, so skip me. Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Tim, Allison, it's Chris. Thanks for the information and sort of the insight into the, the thought process and the myriad challenges that went into, you know, where you're at now. I hate hypothetical questions, so I have a hypothetical, hypothetical question for you. Given time, you know, you know, let's, let's look beyond this year. If you were told, you know, you have access to, and we've kind of touched on a lot of this, but, you know, more parent volunteers who are willing to take leadership roles, maybe some subsidization from, from the community, whether it be PTO, and then maybe the idea of really looking at bus and looking at other, other trip providers. Would, would that, how would you feel about that? What's your, like, what's your reaction to thinking about future trips? Does it still feel fraught as it does? Is that something that you'd feel comfortable entertaining? Again, sorry for the hypothetical.
I will say, it, to me, it does come down to, is this an equitable, equitable opportunity for all of our students? Can we guarantee that every student, regardless of their ability, is able to go on this trip? I've been on the DC trip probably sixteen times in my career as an educator. I love the DC trip, it's not, I have nothing against the DC trip. I totally understand that, you know, kids love that trip. But there are a number of kids in that class, whatever class it is, that has gone every year that I've gone. And sometimes I was a chaperone hanging out back, back with the kids who didn't go on that trip. There are kids who cannot go. And as, you know, as I am thinking about my job as principal is to ensure that every student in my school has an equitable experience to the best of my ability. I know it's not gonna be the same for every kid, but I need to take down every barrier that I can to make sure that they're able to get what, what they should get as a member of a class. And this didn't feel like a class trip. So I didn't go into this year thinking this was gonna happen. I went into this year thinking, we're going on this trip. But in the back of my mind, I had concerns about the equitability of this. Is this okay? Can we do this to kids and families? And went into it thinking, all right, well, with the trip is scheduled, we're gonna work through the logistics. And then when I, when we had all of these logistical issues, as well as this increased cost, which is gonna make it that much more difficult, thinking about the combined financial support that both schools have been giving the kids over the course of, you know, just last year alone. I don't know, I don't know if I, I don't know if I could think that this trip would be able to work. I really don't. I don't know if I, I don't know if my conscience would allow it to happen at this point.
To be honest, this is a conversation that, you know, has, has been occurring among administrators. I'm part of a local principals group, and we, you know, stay connected through email. And in the recent years, you know, not related to COVID, these discussions have been happening. Have you, you know, made any alternate arrangements from, you know, departing from your DC trip? Our district is not going this year, and those conversations are happening. And we've been fortunate that we've been able to pull it off and make it work and work around those obstacles that we faced. But this year, it was just, you know, very, very difficult to see that happening. And I don't want to speak in absolutes, that this could never happen again, but I know that that would be a decision that I need to listen with Chris, with Courtney, and in consideration of, you know, the, the facts in front of us. And I do feel very optimistic about the plans that we have in place. And I think that they will be, you know, very inclusive and fun and an awesome experience for eighth graders. So I hope that we can come back and hear the feedback from the students and from the staff and from the parents. And, you know, maybe we're starting a new tradition here and we can improve upon that and build upon that. And maybe we need to shift gears, but I know that what we're doing right now is, is right, given the current situation.
Thank you. Yeah, Ming Chen?
Yeah, so I have a hard time to process what just been said. Like, I think one parent put it like, say like, inclusion is actually to create opportunities to bring everybody up, right? It's not, it's not about like, hey, what can actually take things away? And then really, like, my question is, like, if, like, when, where is the boundary? For example, if one person cannot do anything, then the entire class is not going to do anything. So like, will any trip be able to happen at all if we have this mindset, right? So should we actually raise our, raise it up to actually to, to create different experience? For example, for different kids, instead of trying to say, hey, we're not gonna do something just because we cannot bring every single one on this trip?
I would also, can I just, I, I'm usually the first person to talk about equity in this group. I say equity like every meeting, if there, I'm sort of somewhere, there's a bingo card that has equity on it, and it's my chip. I say equity, like, every meeting, if there, I'm sort of somewhere, there's a bingo card that has equity on it, and it's my chip. My concern about discussing equity in this way, as one of the, as people are smiling, thank you. My concern about talking equity in this way is that we, there's a saying when we talk about equity, which is nothing for us without us. And we're making a lot of assumptions about why kids cannot participate. We're making a lot of assumptions about why the trip was or was not successful. We're making a lot of decisions based on information that we're using the term equity for, which is not what, what is reflective of equity. And so I think that the reason why I'm asking for another opportunity to have this conversation is because I hope that there will be some opportunity to survey past students who have gone on this trip. Look, both of my kids went on this trip. They both really looked forward to it, they loved it, and I don't have any more kids that will participate in this. So I'm not arguing about this from a personal perspective. I'm arguing about this as a person who is an attorney and cares about kids participating in our process. The fact that so many young people came here to this democratic process today, it brings me to tears. The fact that our students spoke so eloquently today, yes. And you know where you get inspired to do that? On a trip that changes your life. And so it's really important to us to think about if this is, if we're going to substitute this educational opportunity to put something of equal value in its place. And to not make a hasty decision based on things that are hard.
I, I've really kind of struggled with this over the weekend as I've kind of thought about the, you know, the whole, as the information came out and we kind of learned more and had various conversations. And one of the, the big questions I always start with, anytime we have anything, you know, come up on our agenda, is what, what does this mean for school committee? Where is it our purview? Where, you know, and we can have very personal opinions about stuff, but we also have a school committee, hats on. And I'm struggling a little bit that this is where the discussion is taking place tonight. Because I think one thing that we're striving to do in, in this, with school committee and with the town, is creating trust and transparency through the process, through collaboration, through relationship building. And yes, while school committee signs off on the trip for overnight logistics and safety, we actually don't have any purview over whether or not schools do these trips or not. So I found it very hard and a, and a point of thought of kind of, well, if this is where the discussion unfortunately has to happen, you know, we, we have to have the discussion. So, you know, Dr. Chu, Courtney, Allison and Tim, you know, I, I appreciate that you've had two hard weeks of information and meetings and conversation. But I struggle with how maybe the messaging has been communicated. I struggle maybe with, maybe lack of opportunities for a more open dialogue, a Q and A with our specific, let's say, seventh and eighth grade students and families. You know, we're not talking about a district-wide issue technically right now. Maybe it is if it's eighth grade and under. But then it also then poses the question of when we start talking about equity. We talk about it, I think, from a school committee point of view of equity across the district. And then it brings into question of, well, if we can't do our trips in the middle school because of equity, what does this mean for our high school trips? And, and, and I, and I mean that in a very, you know, more of a jumping off question. I don't have an answer. But I think from a school committee perspective, we, we really have to be looking at this of, how could this have been handled? How can this be solved? You know, I will be honest, I have been watching our numbers here all night. This is probably one of the highest watched, live watched, if we want to go to whatever Nelson ratings, Westford Cat ratings, meetings that I have seen in two years. I wasn't here in COVID, thankfully. So this clearly says to me, something has gone amiss. And, and Tim and Allison, I, I, you know, I, I don't envy, obviously, what sounds like a crazy back and forth with tour operators and logistics. I know just how tricky it is for me to plan my own personal trip for five people, so I can't imagine 400. But I, I do think there's a lot of information and scope there that potentially needs to be discussed more and with more input from, from families. And again, you know, our school DEI team that we have that looks across the district in terms of how we're coming to these conclusions and what we can learn from them. Sorry, I rambled on there, but. Yeah, Sean.
I, I think Marisol kicked it off pretty well, right? Like, the, the initial comment was like, what do we know about those 68 folks who didn't come? And why didn't they come? And I, I, I mean, I usually try to go into any argument to try to think of both sides. And this one in particular, I feel like I, I'm really struggling, right? Unless we know why those 68 students go. And like, maybe it's a variety, maybe it's a multitude of reasons, which is the explanation that we've been getting. But like, I, I, because if the, if the focus is money, I feel like there's, there's, there's an opportunity there from the community. If the focus is fear of flying, that maybe this suggests that we should do something a little closer. Or that we should explore buses, something along those lines. It just, without having that information, I, I feel like this is something that's really cool and I'd really hate to see go. I think back to my own middle school experience and I don't remember really some of the teachers that I had and stuff, but I vividly remember an overnight experience that I had in Cardigan Mountain. And I think I'm probably not the only one who had an experience like that in their K through 12. So I think it's something that makes us special and I think it's worth taking another look at. And I get that it's going to be hard, but if there's something else that we can do, it seems like there's community wants to help.
Can I comment on that? I don't want to technically question, I don't know the rules. Am I allowed to?
Yes.
Yes, Allison, go ahead.
It's really hard, you know, I don't, I don't know the students at Blanchard. But I do know that there were, there were many students who met with our eighth grade guidance counselor last year, who, I, I assumed had come to me, who came to me with personal reasons why they were concerned about the trip. Some of those kids did decide to go and some of them did not. And we had a lot, we had a lot of, we had a lot of private conversations. This is why it's really hard. I, I know, I know the numbers and I know the names of the students who didn't go from Stony last year. I can't tell you why, even if I know why. And our guidance counselors can't tell you why, even if they know why. Because they're very private and their personal reasons. And I'm sure that, you know, if, if, I, I, I just know, I can't, I, we can't share that information, but I know that many of those students did want to go. And I also know that there were families that did not ask for financial support because they didn't want to ask for help. And it's really hard to say to, you know, to, to reach out to a family and say, if you need, you know, more than $1,000 in support, we'll provide it to you without insulting them. So those kind, but there were, you know, there were some sort of ways to try to, we tried to, we tried to help people without insulting them. And it was, it was, and it wasn't just financial. When I'm talking about those private conversations, I don't think any of those conversations were about finances. But it, it is a very personal thing for those kids. But I can tell you, I know there were kids who wanted to go on that trip at Stony last year and they couldn't. For, and when I say for reasons we don't even know why, it's because some of them didn't tell us. But some of them did, and we just can't share with you exactly what those reasons were because they're private.
But we also didn't ask them. Like, when you're saying, they didn't tell us, but we also didn't survey folks. Like, we could do an anonymous survey of anyone who attended or didn't attend, or people who have attended in the past. So we also didn't ask them.
Right, I, I will say, I hear you.
Conversations with guidance counselors and those conversations, the answers were given, it's just not information we can share.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, that they didn't ask the questions. They were given information, right? But I hear what you're saying about, should we ask the question moving forward? I, I do think, as upsetting as this decision is, I will say, one of the things that I am struggling with specifically is the ma, the majority of the people are disappointed with the overnight experience, right? The idea of losing an overnight experience. Because both Mr. Heslop and Ms. Hammer were approaching this as this is a class trip. And if this, and if, and if students can't participate in the class trip, then we should rethink the class trip. Nobody is arguing the merits of going to Washington DC. I've also been on the trip multiple times, right? It is, it is a great place to go and visit. It is, it is impactful. I think it can be inspiring to do that. But one of the questions is, is, and I don't know the answer, but I, I wonder, is it Westford Public Schools' responsibility to provide an overnight trip for the students? And when we knew that that was sort of the big hurdle for this, they immediately went to, what can we do to bring the schools together? Because the DC trip doesn't bring the schools together outside of the one dance. And that was something that they were responding to, that a lot of families were saying, we want to have more opportunities for the two eighth grade groups to come together. So they immediately went into, how can we do day trips that truly bring them together so that they are actually interacting with each other? And that became kind of the focus of, if we need to adjust, let's make a class trip that's actually truly removing the barriers, which is one of the things that Allison had talked about. Because I, I hear what you're saying, I hear what, where people are saying, well, if we're not going to do this, then are we not going to do any of these other trips? We're not talking about removing trips from, you know, from our, from, from the things that we're doing. We're saying, is, if, is this the trip that they should be taking? Is, I think, the question.
But then the other question is, is there room for both? And I, and I, to explore both, you know, options too. And I understand exactly what you mean by class trip.
Like a local collaborative?
But, but I, go ahead.
It's always.
This is the committee's discussion. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep. Thanks for coming.
It, it's hard to, to think whether this is a downward spiral or not because you can always take a easier path to actually to not get things done. Or you can take the challenge to get things done, right? So I, I, I just don't know the answer.
I think my question, my question to follow up to your point, Chris, is about the piece about, we wanted to create an experience where the two schools will come together. But the trip is not mandatory. So if the kids don't go to the Boston Day, then there will not be togetherness. And so with youth and adolescents, you have to incentivize sometimes togetherness. We have parents, you know, as, as folks that work with young people. And so I think that there might not be an incentive then for adolescents to participate in something that, that doesn't feel like different to them.
True.
Because of adolescent brain development.
But also that kind of class trip, bringing them all together, if that's what we're looking at, you kind of have to explore, well, what can we achieve within the school day? If you, if you want to look for opportunities to truly bring the two groups together as opposed to doing stuff that happens outside of school.
Right.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And that's been part of our conversation as well, too.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Like, I, I feel this is part of a bigger conversation that needs to happen. But the unfortunate thing is, right now, we have this particular decision right in our laps at a very kind of short timeline, as opposed to, we're discussing next year's eighth grade trip, which would have, you know, and I, I appreciate there was curveballs along the way. But I, I do think it's, it's worth a bigger discussion at some point.
Where would the committee like to see? What would the committee like to see next? I guess, I'm hearing a lot of frustration.
Have there been contingencies or alternatives considered for all those levels? Staffing, chaperones, transportation, cost, funding, schedules, timeframes? I'm a principal too, so this is what I do. And I just want to make sure that we have not, we've turned every stone over before we make this decision. Or before the principals and the administration make this decision. Because this is a big one and this is precedent setting. So, again, just out of fairness to the district and the parents and the kids who have been looking and longing for this trip, especially after COVID, because that has to be taken into account to social, emotional health right now. That's all I'm requesting, hoping for.
I think that sums up what I'm hearing, sort of, from everybody.
So another opportunity to talk about this? Is that what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, it, it would be good to have another window to hear about. And, and hopefully, the, this window, this decision isn't closed right now, as of, you know, 8:45, 8:47 on October 10th, that, that there is still some window for discussion. Again, I, I'm not the decision-maker here, but.
Hold there, because I think it would help if we know the answer.
Know that answer.
Yeah.
Do we know that answer? That's a good question I'm asking. I, I don't know.
You're asking me.
No, I'm asking the principals. What, what Capital Tours, I mean, I know you've moved forward with, with preparing alternative plans. And so.
Yes.
So is, so what is Capital, is Capital Tours already moved on from any potential organization of the previous rendition of the DC trip? The question is, is this, is, is this, this decision is final and we're moving on with other plans? Or is there still room to, to reevaluate this, is what, what Bill is asking?
The committee.
We, we no longer have plans with Capital Tours to go to DC.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
But, but go ahead, why don't you go ahead?
So like, have we exhausted all the option? Because the DC trip is something which like publicizes and then like, which people are ready preparing for, but like, take it away from like, one month or two months into the school year? It's really unfair to all those eighth graders. So like, really, it like, have we exhausted all the options, even without Capital Group?
So I guess, so I guess we, I think.
Should we get an answer to that, though?
Well, I think, my question is, shouldn't we take two weeks to figure out if we've exhausted two options and have that conversation again in two weeks? Because I think asking folks at 8:45 on Monday for answers about what Capital Tours has or has not done is, is kind of unfair to put folks on the Zoom spot. And I think taking it back maybe with the information they've heard today and giving them two weeks to come back to talk to us about it might be a little bit more fair to the principals to have an opportunity to take this feedback instead of just being like, Zoom alert, now make a decision.
Sure.
I, I would just like to add on to that is.
Yeah.
Like, if we can't do a specific DC trip, like we typically traditionally have done, we do have the, I hope we have the opportunity to come at this from a different perspective. Either if we, if, if DC is just not going to work, do we have an option to bus to New York instead for an overnight trip? Or Philadelphia, or, you know, what other options do we have in terms of other tour, tour groups as well? So it's, it doesn't necessarily have to be specific to DC, I suppose.
I think what we're, we're hearing a lot is not just the frustration about the timing of the news and like, the reasons given. And we're hearing frustration from the principals about the logistics that they're, that they're facing. But I also am hearing loud and clear that the alternatives are, are, are not sort of balancing the scale of this loss and grieving this loss. So maybe that could also be part of the coming back, is to just, what, what could we reevaluate for the, if there is, if it, if there, if it is off the table, if DC off the table as an overnight is off the table, what other alternatives could there be?
And I, I would encourage to try and, you know, take time to collaborate, you know, maybe engage with the PTOs, engage, engage with CPAC. You know, we, we've talked a lot about inclusion tonight. I mean, CPAC are our go-to official body for helping, you know, get some information and, and, and help and assist in those decisions. So I would just encourage more dialogue and collaboration, kind of moving forward.
And that kind of feedback's useful no matter what we do in the future. So that's useful to help shape what we might want to explore.
Right. Like, even if there's a plan for this year, but then, like you've been saying, like, there's a larger sort of conversation that needs to happen.
Yeah.
How does that sound?
Can I just get clarity on what you're asking us to do over the next two weeks? Because it, it, it's sounding like you're asking us to plan a different trip overnight. Or to come up with completely different plans with Capital Tours. And we are, when we said we were on a tight timeline, that, it was a very tight timeline. We, you know, we need to get these, these plans-
Is, yeah. I hear you. Is the timeline different if we take planes out of the equation?
I, I think the-
Boston was-
It's challenging.
No, sorry, I meant, I meant, bus to DC. I meant, that's what I meant. If you take flights out of the equation and you bus to DC, is the timeline still as tight? Like, do you have a little bit of wiggle room to look into that more?
I don't know at this point if we do. Um, they may have given away our hotel reservations. They probably have, that's my guess. But I, I don't know. I can ask that question, but I don't believe that busing is going to take away all of the barriers that are going to keep some of our students from being able to go on this trip. I just want to reiterate that, because that is a big concern for me.
Yeah, and again, I, I, I think we can come back in two weeks and we'll have another conversation about this. I honestly don't know, I, I don't think asking them to plan a completely different trip or to try to still, because I, I still am living in what I said is, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I don't believe it's our responsibility to guarantee an overnight trip. And, I believe that that's one of the biggest hurdles that we're facing here. So, if people don't like the day trips, I think we can continue to collaborate and, and talk about that. But the idea of coming back and still trying to create some type of an overnight trip experience, I, I don't, I, I think some of the, some of the concerns and issues will still exist there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, for the class trip.
Yeah. I wonder if the effort's better spent, because I do, it does sound like timing is a real concern as far as logistics of lining things up. I wonder if a, a wiser path might be to kind of regroup and look at future years, and, and take a step back and be thoughtful about what, what trips should look like and what we, what the educational and social emotional inequity goals of, of these class trips are going forward. And that would give us time to really be thoughtful and look at that, you know?
I think it's great to plan in the long term, but we also need some answers like in the short term. And so I think regrouping in two weeks and hearing what the principals, I'm sure, are going to continue to hear from parents this week, and maybe they'll have some ability to respond to that.
Okay.
I think we need to be clear about what we're asking for.
Well, I, I think I need to meet with the principals tomorrow. I think that's what needs to happen. I don't, and then I'll, I'll report back to the committee based on our conversation. I think will be helpful, and we'll, we'll come back at, for the next meeting. It'll be on our agenda for the next meeting. But I feel like it is kind of a, a hard question and ask, to ask of them. So, I think, I'll, I'll meet with them tomorrow. And we'll, we'll kind of-
I'm sure that they were, I mean, I think we can definitely plan a follow-up meeting, like, we have a meeting on the calendar at, in the evening time, but we made an exception when we appointed assistant superintendent. It had a meeting during the daytime hours, which I'm sure we could also do that again, if it makes it more convenient for the principals to be here in person. And, um, so we could definitely do that. We've adjusted for that in the past. And so, I think that, you know, this is a very in-depth conversation, and most, and more voters and constituents have cared about this issue than, you know, other ones. So, I think it would be great to have it on the agenda in two weeks.
Yep, okay. Okay, great. Any last thoughts from the committee members? So then, um, thank you, but there's no more impact, input from the attendees. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next business item, which is building tour update.
So, what we've talked about with the, the committee, the response that we heard was, uh, longer time, fewer places, right? So-
Oh, sorry, to orient, we're talking now about a different tour.
Right.
Which is us going into the buildings-
Building tours, school committee members-
We're not going to be overnight at schools, right?
No, we can camp.
So, uh, so-
Sorry, thank you.
So, the school committee tours. So what we've talked about is actually trying to establish something in the fall, something in the winter, something in the spring, right? And so in the fall, Gerard Coughlin, our Director of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning, is going to provide, he actually has three different days that we've talked about. I kind of want to get a sense, because we thought if we really just made ourselves available for a day in one spot, and then that would provide a bigger window for school committee members to kind of drop in, as opposed to when we said you have this hour and this afternoon, and here, and you kind of signed up for it. And so, the focus is going to be Westford Academy. So he was going to, um, sort of tour, talk about different programs and different, um, spaces, and just the different supports that exist at Westford Academy in the fall. He, we highlighted three different days in, in November as possible days. And so we can, if you, we could kind of poll and then maybe just pick one of them, if that worked for the committee. But Monday the thirteenth, Wednesday the fifteenth, or Friday the seventeenth of November.
Okay.
Those are the three different dates that we were looking at potentially to, he would basically, like I said, plant himself at Westford Academy, and then it would be a little, we can provide more structure if that's helpful too, but the idea being is that it would really just open up that window for-
Throughout the school day.
Throughout the school day for the, for the school committee members.
Okay.
And then in January, late January, we were going to focus on a good old-fashioned facilities tour. You know, looking at the heaters and the boilers and different things that-
Yeah.
That you enjoyed, the catwalk, you know?
Yes, right.
At the, things like that. And, and so Jeff Goodwin and I would kind of make sure that we haven't, we don't have that date yet, but we'll look at that. But we'd do the same kind of a thing where we would, maybe there we would go to a couple of-
I was going to say, okay, yep.
And then in the spring, um, that's when we wanted to focus on actually spending time targeting, um, our, the EL curriculum that we're, that we're putting in to the three to five schools this year, and then the UFLY at the pre, at the pre-K to two schools. And so that would be sort of maybe a full day where we might go to two different places, but spend significant time in, in the buildings looking at that. So that's what, that's what our goal is, and that would be in, we, we think that that would be in April. But we don't have a, a date specifically yet, but to put those, the, the big one being the, if we can get, figure out the November time, if you want to kind of check with the committee to find out if one of those days of the week works better, we can just make that happen.
Any reflections, reactions, questions, yes?
Um, just coming back on, on the November dates with Gerard, you know, I appreciate the idea of trying to kind of put them in one place for the day. But I think specifically, you know, because I know I had brought up about the special education and, and kind of programs aspect of it. What I feel as a school committee member is, I don't have a good broad view of our, our district in terms of pre-K right through to essentially twenty-two in how we, um, what services provide, what programs we provide. And so, I, I appreciate the day of kind of looking at maybe quality over quantity. But I, I, I mean, I would like to, I think, come out of it with a much broader view and understanding, um, what, what it looks like in those classrooms the whole way up. And, and also, you know, as, as we, even from the aspect of, you know, understanding for the FY twenty-five budget, and, 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 um, you know, just in terms of the costs and the programs we're providing. I mean, even I believe we now have two potentially new programs I have heard of, um, within the district that we really haven't spoken about. And so, for me, I think just being a WA with that focus maybe doesn't, um, address maybe what I was hoping to, to get from, from that tour. But, that's just my opinion.
So what, can you, um, articulate what you would like to see, and then we can see if there's other interest?
Yeah.
And just try to schedule that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have reached classrooms, we have, um, I believe there's a new program of some sort, at Christopher Lee. I could be wrong. I know there's a new program at DAY, um, but then again, also then from middle school, I don't know what the programs look like at all in middle school. I have been into, um, some of the classrooms in WA, but we've also never talked about it in that eighteen to twenty-two age group as well. So, um, and so, and, you know, I assume I'm not the only one on the committee that, that will kind of, I think it would be important that we have a broader understanding of what is a very important component, not just for our students, but also our budgets and our policies. Rather than, um, advocating or, um, for them blindly, genuinely, is, is regarding that.
Okay. Are others interested in that type of?
Yeah, I think some of the numbers, case load across the district where students may be supported right now, will help us to better communicate some of the numbers to the community that we're asking for. Because I think the upcoming budget's going to be a big hurdle. And I think the more that we have, the more we can help you. So, I, in particular, would be interested too, from that special ed standpoint. But-
I wonder if it's similar to what Chris and I went through, and, and just offer that.
I think we can do that again. That, the idea was that, we did do that last year, so we're just doing something different.
Right, right.
You know, and focusing on the academy because we haven't.
Yeah, and it wasn't really open last time. It was just kind of chair and vice chair doing it, but yeah, I hear you. So maybe that's, would be a, a version of that. Okay.
And, and I think it's possible to still, you know, figure out, again, the, the goal being, again, fewer places, more time spent in one spot, but we can still,
Well, I think-
It doesn't mean you can't do multiple things.
And I think overall, that's sort of was one of, some of the reflections that we heard at the end of last year and last fall of the, of the tour schedule. So I appreciate that, like, kind of moving in that direction, and maybe there's just some sort of middle, middle ground.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anything else there?
No.
Okay, um, our seven forty-five agenda item. The October first, twenty twenty-three student enrollment.
So you saw the, the enrollment in the, in the packet. I want to thank Kathy for adding additional data-
Yep.
-on there, which I think is helpful for us moving forward. The numbers have not changed drastically since, um, earlier in the year.
Yep.
You know, it's still, it's, it's about the same. We're still, overall, we're, we're shy eighty-two students across the district. I think at the beginning of the year it was eighty-seven, so we, you know, got five-
Okay.
-have joined us. But the idea of adding that additional information, I think, speaks to some of the questions that people had, which gives us a little bit more information as to, um, all the different students that we're supporting.
Look at that, Bill. Look at that. First, our first goal, done.
Done. Done, but yeah.
No, thank you very much. I'm, I don't know how easy that is to assemble, but I, I think it's a great, sort of routine to get into for all of our enrollment updates. And, you know, it's, it's just very informative to see the numbers laid out by grade like that, so. Any questions or reactions to enrollment update? Nope, okay.
I would just be curious, are we, in terms of staffing, then in relation to where we are kind of number-wise in enrollment?
Based on our, based on our numbers? I think we are, I think we, we might be, we might have to make some adjustments based on, some of the supports that, that we need to provide.
Okay.
Potentially. But, as far as the, the actual numbers, this is not different than what we had before, and we have the, the, the staff to support that. So that's just the, that's kind of the typical-
Yeah.
-piece of, you know, sometimes things change throughout the year that you might need to make some adjustments for, but other than that.
Yeah.
I, I have a brief question actually, Chris.
Yeah.
What is services-only category?
Yeah, so we have some students, they're not, they're not enrolled in Westford Public Schools. They might attend a private school, they might be homeschooled, but they do qualify for different services, like potentially speech services is the, probably the best example. And so, we, we as the, as the home district would provide those services. Is that the best way to explain that?
Sure, so either homeschool students or students that might be in private school.
Got it.
So they might come to one of our schools just to meet with one individual.
Or sometimes our students, um, at the preschool level only qualify for itinerant services. They don't qualify for a full preschool program, so they might only be coming in for the related services.
That's interesting. Thank you. Thanks for including that.
I have a follow-up question to Sean's. Um, do we have students enrolled in online school? And do we have information around that?
We, we have, we have students who live in Westford who are enrolled in different online schools. They're, they would, that would then be whether they're homeschooled and it's being supported by that, or if they're enrolled, um, if they're enrolled in TECA, right? TECA is the, as the Commonwealth School, that would be the school that they're enrolled in, just like if they're going to Neshoba Tech, or if they're going to a charter school.
Right.
But, um-
Or Greenfield.
Or, or Greenfield, yeah, there's actually two. But, but we do have some students who are officially being homeschooled, and the curriculum that they might be accessing, which might be a private, um, thing, might be online.
Okay.
Do we, do we have to provide services then, if you're with TECA or Greenfield? Or does the onus then fall on TECA and Greenfield to provide those services?
For the most part, it falls on those districts to, and they have, some have a virtual IEP. There are times where it's challenging for them, and they might, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asks for the home district to partner with, um, that virtual school to make that happen.
Thanks, Courtney. Yeah, thank you. Good conversations. The next up is a personnel update.
Sure, so you, you're looking at just a one-pager? A snapshot of movement from September fifth through October sixth? That just captures some of our new hires, separations, or, um, status changes that have, might have moved around. We are currently still looking for an ESL teacher that we will be interviewing for. I think it's happening this week. And our teaching assistants, we're doing better on as far as the hire. We're still looking at, for three of them at the academy, as well as one at Stony Brook, but that is in much better standing than where we were, um, several weeks ago, so that's great. We're also looking for a math interventionist. And then, of course, substitutes, we definitely need substitutes for all academic areas. Nursing substitutes are a very big one. And, um, looking for another seven D driver to help us out in our transportation department, as well as food services and custodians.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Oh, there was one thing, not related to this, about the SACS, the, um, school advisory. I should have done it in the updates. Will I throw it in there at the last minute?
Okay. If anyone's still watching-
If anyone is still watching, true. We are looking for, um-
For context, each school has a school advisory council, and every fall they start meeting. They're required, um, by state mandate to have a community member that is not a parent in that school. And our Robinson and our day schools advisory councils are missing a community member. So that can be someone retired or with kids in a different school. But, I don't know if they're meeting virtually or in person.
Day school does virtual.
Day school does virtual, maybe. And we would love for some, a member of our community to get involved. And we can reach out to anyone here to connect you with the right principals. Okay, thank you. Um, and then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So this?
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. And all those in favor? Great, thank-